Into order. Good evening, everybody. This is the Scott County Board of Adjustment, June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, six thirty P. M. Held at the Scott County Highway Department of Public Works. Tonight, um. Start off the meeting with a roll call and introductions. Commissioner Donna Hensh, Donna Hensh, here. Gary Hartman, here. Ray Huber.
Here.
Ed Robbie.
Here.
Barbara Johnson.
Here.
Lee Watson.
Here.
Tom Vonhoff.
Here.
Also present, county staff, Brad Davis, planning manager, Marty Schmitz, zoning administrator, Greg Wagner, principal planner, Nathan Hall, associate planner, Barb Simonson, deputy clerk to the board. And attending via Zoom, Tom Wolf, our Scott County Commissioner. So next item on the agenda is the approval of the May tenth, two thousand twenty-one Board of Adjustment minutes. Everybody's been given a copy. Are there any changes or comments? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. For Heinz variance, P. L. Number two oh two one dash zero four three. It's a request for a variance from the required one hundred foot right-of-way setback to forty feet to construct a grain bin. It's located Section fourteen, Sand Creek Township. The current zoning is A. One. And who's presenting? Marty Schmitz will be presenting.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Board members on the screen. You can see the location map, twenty acres that the applicant owns. It sits in Section fourteen of Sand Creek Township, property of zone A. One, which is our egg preservation. It sits in the north of Country Trail West or State Highway two eighty-two, just south of Geis Lake, which is natural environment lake. On the screen now is a aerial photo of the property. The areas are predominantly agricultural in nature. The property is pretty much agricultural from the edge of Geis Lake all the way to two eighty-two, with the exception of the homestead. The applicant purchased this property in two thousand twelve. There was an original farmhouse in the area about where the hand is, a little bit further to the west, right in that area there. In two thousand eighteen, he removed that farmhouse and built the home further back to the, right there. So that was done. And in doing the removal of that home, he created this gravel pad area, and that's the area where he would like to store or put the grain bin. He is requesting a variance from the required one hundred foot road right-of-way setback to forty feet to install that grain bin. The building on the southwest side of the farmstead received a variance in nineteen eighty-five. This farmstead predates any county zoning regulations, and that's why it's much closer to the roadway than our ordinance permits. Here's a close-up of the area of the farmstead. You can see very much the location of grain bin. It is generally in the same location that the home was located. The reason he would like to place it here is because he has a large gravel area, which makes it easy for trucks to maneuver, equipment to maneuver, to load and unload gravel. Also, it's far enough away from the power lines if you move an augers and that sort of thing for your safety and the operation. The road right-of-way on State Highway two eighty-two is a hundred and eighty feet wide, which is about three times what you typically find with a county road. So even though these forty feet from the road right-of-way, it'll be about a hundred and forty feet from the center of State Highway two eighty-two. We did not receive any comments from Minna regarding this variance request. Sand Creek Township did recommend approval of the request here. And Greg, if you can jump to, this is the photo of the grain bin that he would be installing there. It is eighteen feet in diameter and it's twenty-three feet wide. I recommend approval of this variance, and I'll answer any questions the applicant here as well.
Is there any questions by the board? I'd like to make a comment. This was owned at one time by Joe. He was on the Scott County Watershed Board, and it was an organic farm, beautiful place. And the backside of the land drops down to that Geis Lake. I'll also point out along the road there, there's a lot of trees, vegetation as a little buffer. So yeah, I'm very familiar with the farm. We've had a Scott County, one of our tours was out there several years ago. Just can't think of Joe's last name right now.
Joe Adams.
Huh?
Adams.
Joe Adams, there you go. Nice guy.
Oh, yeah.
Anyway. Is there anyone, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this issue? Please, do they step forward, Brad?
Yeah.
They call, okay, come up here. If you have any questions or concerns or comments, sign in your name and address. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Chairman, I will be close the public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Watson, second by Commissioner Robbie. Or Huber, correction, by Commissioner Huber, to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. I'll entertain a motion on this side. Based on the findings listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the requested variance from the required one hundred foot right-of-way setback to forty feet to construct the grain bin. Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Commissioner Robbie.
Mr. Chair, just noting that Sand Creek Township approved it, and Minna had no comments.
Okay. Let me re-. Let's bring the amendment. All right, there's been a motion at second. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And that will wrap it up for the Scott County Board of Adjustment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Hensh, second by Commissioner Huber to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? This meeting is adjourned.
Good evening. Welcome to Scott County Planning Advisory Commission meeting, June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. I'll start with the roll call. Commissioner Hensh, Commissioner Hartman.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Robbie.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Vonhoff.
Here.
Also present, we have Brad Davis, our planning manager, Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator, Greg Wagner, principal planner, Nathan Hall, our associate planner, and Barb Simonson, deputy clerk to the board, and our county commissioner, Tom Wolf, is on Zoom. I'd like to say welcome to everyone this evening. Our first item of business will be to approve the May ten, Planning Advisory Commission meeting minutes. Commissioners have all been sent copies of the minutes and had opportunity to review them. And are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes as printed?
Mr. Chair, I believe there could be a correction. I attended the meeting through Zoom, but I think Commissioner Ed Robbie was present.
Okay. We will make that correction. Are there any other corrections to the amended minutes now? I'll look for motion to approve the minutes with that amended motion item.
It will move to accept the minutes.
Motion by Commissioner Robbie. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hensh. I will call by voice, voice, votes. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Votes.
Minutes are approved. The next item actually covers four items. It's our consent agenda. And all items listed on the consent agenda are considered by the planning commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a planning commission board member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be moved from the consent agenda to consider separately. The first item is item thirty-one. It's the Wise Edition Platte, number twenty twenty-one dash zero three nine. It's a request for preliminary platte involving the Wise Edition, which is of two lots and six acres. The location is Section fifteen, Spring Lake. Current zoning is rural residential two. Would anyone like to remove that from the consent agenda? Okay? Anyone on Zoom? Second item is item three two. This is the Milner Resoning. This is number twenty twenty-one dash zero four five. This is a request for rezoning of seventy-six point one seven acres from Rural Residential Reserve District to Rural Residential Single Family District. Location is Section twenty-nine, Spring Lake, and the current zoning course is rural residential one. Would anyone like to remove this from the consent agenda? Okay? Third item we have is item three three. This is the Four B Estates rezoning of Platte, number twenty twenty-one dash zero four one. It's a two-part request, request for rezoning of twenty acres from Rural Residential Reserve District to Rural Residential Single Family District. The second portion is a request for approval of preliminary platte and final platte of Four B Estates consisting of three lots on twenty acres. The location is Section twenty-six, Spring Lake Township, and it's rural residential one zoning. Would anyone like to remove this from the consent agenda? Okay? The fourth item on our consent agenda this evening is a public hearing for Rice Estates Platte. This is twenty twenty-one dash zero four zero. It's also is a two-part request. It's a request for rezoning of ten acres from Rural Residential Reserve District to Rural Residential Single Family. Second part is request for approval of preliminary platte and final platte of Rice Estates consisting of two lots on ten acres. Section twenty-six in Spring Lake Township. Current zoning is rural residential one. Would anyone like to remove this from the consent agenda to be considered separately?
No.
And we will approve all four of these items when the consent agenda is approved. At this time, I'll work for a motion from the planning commission to move to approve these four items on the consent agenda.
Chair, I will conclude.
I have a motion from Commissioner Huber to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. I will call this vote by all. Commissioner Hensh? Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vonhoff?
Yes.
This item has been approved, so if you're here for any of those items, they were approved from this motion. So if you're here for that this evening, that has been approved. We'll now move on to our next item, which is a public hearing for Brett's Day Camp. And this is request for interim use permit to operate a private day park as a farm camp on eight point one acres. And it's in Section thirty-six, New Market Township, and current zoning is U. V. R. I'll be making the report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the subject property is located in Elset Hills subdivision. The property is eight point three one acres. It's applicant's house, just rebuilding. The property also has a pool and facility for small livestock. It contains heavy tree cover in areas, but is largely open throughout, has a wetland in the northwest corner. Property is near Interstate thirty-five, but has access to Dupont Avenue, which is a gravel township roadway. The property is zone U. V. R., and surrounding properties are largely similar in size and character. Rural residential property is also larger remaining agricultural property as well. The people of Brett's are requesting interim use permits for a, to establish Discovery Days Farm Camp at their property in New Market Township. The proposed farm camp for children would operate Monday through Friday during ten weeks of the summer, and one-day camps on Saturdays, based on demand up to six per season. The camp would have up to thirty children at once, with campers split into groups of ten based on age. The camp would have a number of activities that utilize property's pool, playground, woodshop, and farmyard. Activities would be supervised by staff of up to eight people, including applicants themselves. A private day park is allowed in the U. V. R. zoning district through interim use permit. Under the county zoning ordinance, a private day park is defined as a land use for day recreational activities which do not include overnight camping of any type. Other day parks that have been permitted as interim use, interim uses in the county include Cedar Lake Farm, private park that existed prior to becoming a regional park, and Sand Creek Adventures near Jordan, Skevers Fall Festival, and the YMCA Youth Camp, which is also in New Market Township. While the applicants do intend to create some accessible trails throughout the site, they would not be disturbing more than ten thousand square feet of area, land area, and so therefore a grain permit is not required. Scott County Natural Resources Department has said they have no comments regarding the plan. The attendees would not be allowed to use the twelve facilities within the house, but as seasonal use, they would be allowed to have a portable restroom facility there. And Scott County Environmental Services Department has reviewed the request and may have no issues with the plan. The applicant does not intend to utilize the existing structures, where they have ten by twenty-foot long temporary canopies. And in severe weather events, the applicants intend to use the walkout basement of the existing house. Temporary structures would not require inspection by the building inspection department, but the applicant will need to ensure that the site plan and proposed structures complies with accessibility codes and fire codes. And the building inspection department has included some comments that were included in your packets tonight, to clarify what is covered and not covered under Scott County 的规定. New Market Township has reviewed the request at their May fourth, two thousand twenty-one meeting. The township recommended approval of the request with the condition that cars drop off of attendees on-site, if not on the roadway. And a copy of the recommendation is seen here and also included in the packets. And so, subject to the conditions of approval, the interim use permit request reforms to the zoning ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the interim use permit based on the criteria for approval that are listed in the staff report. And I will, if there are any questions, the applicants are all.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Hall. The planning commissioners have any questions at this time for Mr. Hall? Help this. Commissioner Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, if the applicant could answer, if they have playground equipment in this store, are they certified?
There is. Sir, if you'd like to walk to the podium, and when you start your comments, just identify yourself.
Okay. I'm Dave Brett, one of the applicants. Nice to meet you. Good evening. Yes, we do have playground equipment. It's your standard wooden equipment that we have in a little playground there with trampoline as well. We don't have any special certification for them.
My next question is, you're going to operate June through August. Do you have any winter activities?
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Make any.
Questions? The township has approved this with the condition that drop-off and pickup occur on your property and not on the road. Well, having looked at it, you don't have a lot of space. How many cars do you expect to be dropping off in the morning and pick up in the afternoon?
Up to twenty, depending on how many.
That's a lot of vehicles in ten or fifteen minutes. I don't know where you're gonna put them.
Well, and that'll be a challenge that we're trying to figure out how we'll work it out, but at this point, the plan is we'll have, one of us adult leaders will be out there to try to keep them moving. But as far as that goes, you know, with the stipulation that we have to pull them into the driveway, we'll probably have to do one at a time. And if somebody needs to stick around and converse with one of us camp leaders, then they'll have to pull up further in the driveway. There's plenty of space in the driveway, but obviously not everybody's gonna want to sit there and wait for everybody else to drop off. But one alternative would be have as many pulling in the driveway as we can, drop off your kids, and then one at a time, pull back out and go down. The nice thing is, there is a cul-de-sac at the end of the road there, so they won't have to go back against traffic right away. They can pull out, go down, turn around.
Exactly. You're gonna have a few, you're gonna have some queue up on.
Yes. There will be. And our direction that we're planning to, that we'll be giving, and hopefully everyone will follow and will check it out while it's happening, is, you know, keep speed down, and as you're approaching our house, stay off the shoulder, but move alongside the traffic and get by. So at least if they have to stop and queue up, they're stopping and slowly moving on the roadway and not on the shoulder, which was the concern that the township expressed.
I have no problem with the camp. I just think that at some time, you're gonna have to address the traffic.
Now logistics is in detail. We recognize that. One alternative I'm keeping in the back of my mind is whether we need to bring it back up after the first week of camp, see how it goes, but we may have to come back to the township and then see if we can get any leeway on that. To just have them pull up to the end of the driveway, drop off, and then keep going. Assuming, that'd be a great flow control, but that's, we didn't really talk about that. That thought didn't come to our mind when we were at the township at the time. So.
It is a huge problem that you have to address at some point.
Do you have a waiting list up here? How are you getting them out?
So we've, we have let the word out for a lot of our friends and family that are in the area of Elko and Lakeville. And so that was just kind of word of mouth, and we made a little Facebook page to share with them. So we had a lot of people who were kind of queued up, ready to sign up before we started the process. And so they're all still kind of waiting to see and waiting for the final approval. Just this weekend, we're starting to open it up more publicly. We've made a flyer. Pages, Elko, the local pages, if more people can see it. So we're looking to step out and advertise a little bit more. Right now, we've probably only got six or seven kids signed up, but we've got about seventy people on our Facebook page. So I think a lot of them are just waiting to see how things are gonna go here, since we're kind of pushed up to the end.
Yeah, Mr. Robinson.
Number one, I did visit the property. I visited with both David and Philip and Joe. And this is a, when we walked the property, it's a beautiful property, poor state, yeah, situation. I did have a slight concern. We talked about the drop-off area. I sensed through that it might be a little bit of a bottleneck and then pulling in. And we did discuss that it would probably eliminate a bottleneck if they were able to pull off as far as they could on the front. I think it would flow quicker, faster, they would be able to drop them off and then go around to the cul-de-sac. It's not that far. I think that needs to be revisited constantly, since I probably sensed that it might be a little bit more bottleneck, depending on everybody, as you said, a slot of time, a drop-off time. And actually, by just viewing that, it would make more sense to me to just have that flow like that drop off and have them. Another easy to excuse that and, oh, that's what I'm talking about. But it's an ideal situation for what you're proposing. The layout is great, the playground area, you just have great food and everything. I did have a question, though. Don't you play any music? All music that was used in the nation?
I don't think so. Please play the music in the area. Pretty much, there won't be any basic music. I don't have any big parties. I think I'll strip the neighbors.
Mr. Chairman, you guys just took advantage of the kids that were trying to come from local, and we talked about Elko and.
Yeah, yeah, because most of the people we're talking with, or have talked with on a, are mostly Elko, New Market, and Lakeville.
But it's just a time that areas. Maybe at some point later on, it might make sense to have a band or something and be at a different location and visit, rather than on the road.
And that's a great consideration. I think, you know, just right up the road is a church and a parking lot, and I'm sure we could coordinate something with them. So, thank you. That's a great idea to, you know, to change these things, but we could definitely work that process.
Any other questions?
Oh, good. Chairman, you talked about the animal interaction with working projects. Perhaps you could do music, guitar, or something like that?
Oh, certainly. There are endless possibilities of things we could include, you know, in the sample agenda we put in there. We got a list of different activities that we brainstormed, but we're kind of open to see what it would be. We've got, we're thinking about somebody coming out to maybe teach painting as a special guest. And so somebody who could spend some time teaching the basics of guitar would, would be interesting as well. So as far as activities that the kids can do, there's really nothing on the table other than things that would be safety concerns. But as far as having like a, you know, big, big learning music concert type thing, it would, I don't think the neighbors would ever hear anything that we've got going on unless, you know, kids cheering real loud.
And your severe weather plan is to have them come into the house in the basement ultimately?
Yes, yeah. And the base, there's a, from the pool area, it's a walk-in from there. So it's really easy to access, and we've got the interior rooms in there that we should give good enough shelter if it gets bad.
And you have, it's large enough that you could shelter?
Yeah, we, you know, with, you know, up to twenty kids plus staff, we should have plenty of rooms, so you're less than thirty people.
Do you have a Noah's weather video?
On my phone, I do, yes.
Well, that, I just think that would be probably, you know, on your phone to have the apps.
Yeah.
Because, you know, you're not paying attention when the weather's coming.
Right. Yeah, to have those words.
Yeah. Any other questions? This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to make comments on this application, they can come up to the podium. Please start with your name. And. Seeing that no one is moving. Would anyone on Zoom like to make a comment on this application? Hearing no one. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
I will be close the public hearing.
Motion by Commissioner Watson. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Hensh. I'll call the vote. Commissioner Hartman?
I have a question before we vote, if I could.
Okay, sure.
I wasn't able to drive out to the property like a couple of the commissioners were. I was just curious if they, was there any other alternatives or things that could have been done to, to change this drop-off site? been done to, to change this drop-off site on the property? You know, drive in and room to expand on the property versus at the end of the road or on the township?
I can address that, Mr. Chairman. I guess the only thing would be, what it's going to take, was there would be kind of a horseshoe. I think we've got the opinion to do that. If in fact that, again, it becomes a bottleneck in that area with pulling in and then backing out. They do have a site approach that drop off and then back into this where they're not backing right onto the front. But there's a possibility, and I, again, I think that's a plan that we can just do a horseshoe kind of deal. So that's.
And then further concern, the area, let's look to the future here. The area across the road looks agriculture. Is there going to be homes there possibly in the near future? And is this going to create more of a problem when that happens? So I have, I have concerns with this drop-off. And I'm all for the camp. I'm all for the camp, but I have concerns about this drop-off. So I just wanted to explore that before we vote.
It would require another culvert to be put in, I would imagine, on that property, to do a horseshoe drive, I wouldn't.
It appears to me it's very low traffic, you know, at this point, so they just agree with that. And again, that's based on the perches that could be developed. The higher traffic area in the future is what I saw.
Mr. Chairman, they're going to be open, well, June is pretty about over, August, September, July and August. So should we revisit this in a year, to help first year win?
I'd like to suggest that we come back or report, because I think that we would feel better about it if we haven't come back in 12 months and report on what, is that kind of where you're heading with that?
Yeah.
Yes, that's absolutely fine. For us, we'd be happy to come back.
Yeah, exactly. And I think because of the impact of this, you know, and it can seem, and this is a concern for us, obviously.
Yeah, and it's a big logistics issue, and we recognize the gravity, for sure. And as far as your question, so certainly, we have that long driveway a lot that parallels the road. It'd be easy to put another culvert there to come out. As far as your question about what's across the road there, the farmer who has the part that's just north of, you know, just straight, yeah, that one right there, he just came and talked to us and said he's putting in, to be able to put in an access into his, into his field right there. Just suggests to me that he's planning to be there and planning to maintain that as agriculture. The part that's just south, they're actually building a house right there right now, and we're, we're talking to them about this whole thing, and they've been on board with it. So I'm not sure as far as future development, it may, seems like it may be outside of our vision to know if straight across the way it would have any houses. But down south, just south of there, there's one being built right now. That's for sure.
Mr. Chairman, the property is still an urban expansion reserve, and the area around it is a special expansion reserve. The density in the urban extension reserve is 1 in 40. So there isn't going to be a lot of homes built in this area, probably until annexation by Elko New Market, which is well out into the future. In addition, this is an interim use permit, and we do have condition eight drafted, or condition seven. The interim use permit shall be reviewed for termination when the property is sold, furthest undivided, or rezoned. We could add to that, or if the property is annexed into the state of Elko New Market. That would make the board feel more comfortable. That's quite a ways out into the future. There are ways from the city and the county.
Any further, I want, Commissioner Hartman?
No more questions.
We do have a motion on the table, and I'll call the vote now. And that motion, very further discussion before I call for the motion.
We're just closing the public hearing. We're going to check in a year from now.
Yes, we're just closing the public hearing. The motion, close public hearing, and then I'll ask for a motion on this report. Okay, so we're considering the motion, close public hearing, and I'll come back. Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hensus? So the public hearing is closed at this point, and in a further discussion, I'll entertain a motion on this matter.
Mr. Chairman, based on that criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the interim use permit for David and Angela Gretz to operate a private day park on a farm camp, noting that this recommendation is subject to the conditions listed in the staff report that must be satisfactorily addressed prior to county board consideration of the IQP. Further noting, New Market Township has approved, two, this will be visited in one year, particularly to address the traffic situation, and three, add to condition number seven, we will add the verbiage "or" annexed to Elko New Market.
Yeah, a motion by Commissioner Johnson. Do I have a second?
A second motion.
Second by Commissioner Watson. Is there further discussion before I call for the vote on this? Mr. Hartman? Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hensus?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is approved. Your question has been approved with those conditions. Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Thank you, Seavey. The next item is the Messebrink Larson Plan, 20 S088. It's a request for a preliminary plat and final plat of Fieldstone Industrial Park accessing up ten lots on 83.29 light acres and rotation section 14 New Market Township. The current zoning is rural business reserve. And I believe that Greg Wagner, our principal planner, will be making the report this evening.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, on the screen is the site location map. As you indicated, the property is located on the south side of 245th Street each, which is County Road 62. And the majority of the property is located on the east side of Pilgrim Avenue, which is County Road 46. There is a little triangular piece that is severed by Pilgrim Avenue. That area is largely wetland. That will be platted as an outlot. Possibly something the county could consider in the future or an adjacent property owner. But the majority of the development will be located on this piece here. I'll be flipping back and forth to several John and Seaver's. So on the screen is the project plan set for the Fieldstone Industrial Park. The applicant, Messebrink Construction, and the property owner, JNS Land, are proposing to subdivide this property into 10 rural industrial business lots, as shown here. So I'll just do a quick overview of the layout, and then I'll go back for some, some history. So what's being proposed here is, is construction of a new road off of County Road 62 that would have the main roads identified as Larson Lane and in the cul-de-sac. The cul-de-sac will not extend to the east due to a large wetland complex that is further off the property. But for connectivity purposes, there is land, developable land to the south that is also under the rural business reserve zoning district. So a road connection would be stubbed to the south property line, as shown here on the submitted project plans. The 10 industrial, or rural industrial lots range from two and a half acre minimum. I believe the largest lot, largest lot, yeah, two and a half acres up to 23 acres for Lot 2, Block 2, which is on the far east side. For a subdivision proposal, which is what is requested at this point, the subdivision, or the applicant must prove that the proposed subdivision meets county ordinance. And what we're talking about there with the subdivision is that the lots meet our lot area with standards, that there is a building site on each lot that meets required structure setbacks, and that each lot has two septic sites for, for each parcel. So what you see here is a concept building pad. The dash lines that you see bringing the property would be the setbacks. These are building pad locations to show that each lot has at least one location for a building pad. And then the rectangular sites with the P and the A, that's primary and alternate. So they need two sites for each lot. Whether that's a commercial industrial subdivision like this or residential subdivision, the applicant's job here is to propose something that will meet county standards. Once the subdivision, if and when the subdivision is approved, the purchasers of each lot, so whether it's Lot 6, Block 2, or Lot 3, Block 1, those individuals, depending on the type of use, will have to come forward with a use permit application. So at this point, we are not reviewing the specific uses, we are reviewing the subdivision. I've spoke to a lot of individuals on the phone and had questions about what's going in here. At this point, those applications have not been submitted because the lots have not been, the lot, the lots in the subdivision have not been approved. So this is the first step in that process. Once the lots are approved, then each individual lot has to make a separate application for review. And as part of those applications, we look at, okay, what is this business doing on the property? What is the building? Where's their parking area? Where's their landscaping? Do they have any outdoor storage? Stuff like that. At this point, that has not been requested. What's being requested is what's shown on the screen here is the first subdivision of the property. So just to step back and show you a couple of maps, because this was a common question in my conversations that I've had with a lot of the public who I believe is here tonight, as well as you did receive all the emails that were forwarded or sent to, to the county. So the history here is going back to the cities of Elko New Market down in southeast Scott County. In 2005, or in or around 2005, when the cities ultimately merged, one of the things that happened was they worked with the Met Council to bring a sewer interceptor that would serve the cities of Elko New Market. So I'm going to zoom into that area. So a sewer interceptor was brought in, and it actually runs on the south side of 62, and it goes down to Elko New Market, and it now serves the cities of Elko New Market. Previously, they had been on their own individual wastewater treatment plant. The sewer interceptor connected those cities up to the metropolitan system. And as a condition of the Met Council bringing that investment out to southeast Scott County, the cities did a comprehensive land use plan back in 2005. And that really identified this area that's in beige, which does extend down into Rice County, for an area that that sewer interceptor would serve. I believe the population projected is like 80,000 people. So that is kind of this area. The other thing that the cities did is when they looked outside of their boundaries at that planning area, they identified the areas in beige as future residential, and what the county has here as this candy stripe was identified as future business, future commercial, future industrial. So you can see, that was reflected here on the county's 2030 comprehensive plan, which was adopted back in 2009. So this planning has been done like 15 years ago. So you can see the corridor along County Interstate 35, County Road 46, up to 245th Street. That's basically the north boundary of that future city. That is future urban, and the city had identified that as business, future commercial or industrial. Flash forward 10 years, back to like the 2017 timeframe, when we kicked off our 2040 comprehensive plan, the county and the city is required every, every 10 years to update our land use plans. And what really changed is looking at the timing of that development. So as I zoom in, so one of the things we do as county zoning staff is meet with not only the cities, but the adjacent townships. So we met with New Market, we met with Cedar Lake, we met with townships along Highway 169. And one of the topics that came up in those discussions, 2017, 2018, was the need for more, what we would call rural business land. Stuff that needs large lots, stuff that needs outdoor storage, stuff that needs parking for vehicles and, and equipment. And not only this area that we're talking about here, but further up towards Lakeville, down on the south border, and then areas along 169 in Louisville, Sand Creek Townships. Those areas are beyond, like in this case, Elko New Market's 2040 planning area. So looking out 20 years, these areas that are in gray were beyond, they're, they're still future urban, but they're beyond that 20, 2040 growth area. So development at urban density for business would not happen there for 20 years. So that was one of the topics that the townships had asked the county to look at, where do we have land that could be changed for rural business uses? So these parcels in this geographic area on the north extent, which had previously been identified by the city as future business, were changed to what's now called rural business reserve. In the rural business reserve, we do allow, so that, I'm sorry, that was then adopted after public hearings and working with the county and recommendations by the township. That was adopted back in 2019. So that was one of the big questions people had, well, when did this change occur? It's been happening for the last 15 years. And really officially took, you know, was changed to this in 2019. In the rural business reserve, we're going to see uses like office building, officer professional buildings that, again, require outdoor storage, things that we would call contractor yards. So landscaping operations that would have materials and equipment they need to park outside. So more than likely, when you go back to this site map, what you're going to see is a building with customer employee parking in the front, and generally, the outdoor storage is required to be in a rear or side yard. Can't have storage in a front yard. It can't be within a required setback. Outdoor storage has to be screened, landscaped, stuff like that. So that type of information will be reviewed on an individual basis once these lots come in. So going back to this plat analysis, one of the common things was, well, why, why is this application being brought before the planning commission at this point? A lot of comments, people felt this was maybe premature to come to this forum. When the county receives an application, we want to get it out for public comment, you know, as soon as reasonably we can do that. So this application was made at our May 3 application deadline, which would schedule any application for this meeting to get public comment. In the meantime, county staff has done our review, or at least an initial review of the project planners that we see here, which would include stormwater, septic review. road review. The township and their engineer have also been reviewing this proposal. We bring this before the planning commission in a forum that we feel as county staff has a very good chance that it is meeting county ordinance requirements. And once the plans meet all county ordinance requirements, would be in approvable form. So we don't wait until the application is 100% approved because then people are kind of having the action, well, we weren't told about this and now it's a done deal. So we're bringing this here to get public comment. And as you saw, we did have a lot of public comment. So I'll touch on a few things and then maybe open it up for the public hearing. In the staff reports, one of the comments was the environmental health review or services review of the septic sites. The main issue right here, you see a corridor running through blocks two, three, four, and then along the south line. That's the CapEx 2020 overhead power lines. So the 150-foot tall towers run through here. There were septic sites that were located in that corridor, which is permitted if they have permission from the easement holder, which would be the power company. That is still something they can do. At this point, the applicant chose to relocate the septic sites. So they have all been moved outside of the easement. And Jesse Kuzinski from Environmental Services did go out there a week ago Thursday and did indicate that the sites that are proposed here do have suitable soils for approval through the plan. So from Environmental Services, essentially everything that they were looking for has been approved. Now, that doesn't mean that the buyer of Lot Three can't go talk to the power company and say, well, you know, this is a better location for my septic site. They can move those, once they purchase the property, they can move their septic sites. They just need to get permission from the power company to locate the septic in the easement. That is a common thing, a lot of landowners, homeowners do have when the power lines went through. Because septic sites are in the ground, it's usually not a big deal for the power company. So that is a possibility that when these individual site plans come in, you may see some of those septic sites relocated. But what's proposed here does meet county ordinance requirements. Looking to, this is an example of the grading plan. Another question came up with stormwater management. So, and questions about the water shed. The county's stormwater standards are very restrictive to the point that they require stormwater management to what's called a pre-settlement condition. Meaning before there's any agricultural use, when this was prairie and woodlands, the engineers can calculate back to a pre-settlement condition. And the developer is required to then take that stormwater from any new hard surface. So the buildings, their storage area, the roads, they have to capture all that stormwater and basically deal with it on the property. They cannot release it off the property and increase the runoff to an adjacent land. So this is just an example of what they're doing. So there's wetlands here. They're proposing a series of infiltration basins. So there's a basin here, there's an infiltration basin here. There's a number of these scattered throughout the property, as well as stormwater ponds. So in development today, we commonly see stormwater ponds. Infiltration basins, what they're designed to do is take that stormwater, hold it, and let it infiltrate into the ground so that it does not run off onto adjacent properties. The stormwater facilities are also used to capture that increased flow. And then they're designed to also treat that water. So if there's any contaminants that run off from any leaking vehicles or, you know, fluids or whatnot, these ponds are designed to take care of that and treat that water before it's released into the ground. So the applicant has proposed a series of this throughout the site. So as I click through, you'll see just infiltration areas and ponding throughout the site. So when, if and when this project gets approved, they will need to construct as well as the township's road. That is designed to township standards. So as I said, the township engineer is reviewing this, as well as the county engineer. The county engineer makes sure that they meet those standards. And the township engineer makes sure that everything's designed to township standards because these ponding and infiltration areas are dedicated in easements. And the local unit of government, who in this case is the township, then has easement rights over those areas to get in and maintain should they need to. I spoke to the township engineer today, about noon today. He indicated no significant concerns with the proposal. He had a couple of comments that he was awaiting anything revised plans, but nothing that he felt could not be addressed. Similarly, Megan Tasta, the county water resources engineer, we speak weekly, if not almost daily. She indicated no major concerns with what was proposed here. She did have a list of a page and a half or two pages of comments, but those were relatively minor fixes that just need to correct numbers on the plans. The main thing that she was looking for in these infiltration areas was some soil borings, just to verify that the soils could do that infiltration. Those soil borings were submitted this afternoon, so now she will be reviewing those. Per standard, we look to see if there's anything significant here. She has indicated no. Township engineer has indicated there's nothing significant or outstanding that can't be addressed. So in our recommendation to the planning commission, staff recommends approval of the project subject to all those items being addressed as per standard. The next, I think, big issue for people was transportation. So the applicant met with County Highway and initially was proposing a loop street that would come out across Black Walnut Drive. That loop street was decided unnecessary. This was a little closer to some of the residential pieces here, but when they met with County Highway, that was shifted further to the west. So the location here is mainly across from, there's a cemetery on the north side of the road. They will be putting in a right turn lane on the county road to get into the development. Due to the cemetery, a lot of times we request a bypass lane, but that's at this point not feasible because there's just not enough room there. So the right turn lane would be put in there. County Highway did review this last week. They went out to the site again. A lot of comments from the public were pertaining to road-related issues. So Friday, they assembled a memo that was sent to us late today. So this was from the planning commission ahead of the meeting. The developer has not seen this memo. We just received this late today from County Highway. Craig Johnson, the transportation planner. So I'll go through it, which hopefully will address some of the public questions and concerns. County Road 62, question was on whether that road could handle large truck traffic. The response there is County 62 is a nine-ton roadway and is classified as a future collector highway with average daily count of 450 vehicles per day. That was a 2019 count, so a pre-COVID count, so a very low volume of traffic. County collector roadway is typically designed for a minimum of 2,500 trips per day. So this is well below what that road is designed for. Somebody brought up that County 62 has road postings. And it is indeed posted as a five-ton during spring road restrictions. That is mainly due to the fact that the portion in Scott County to the county line right here is paved. Once you hit Dakota County, it is gravel. So the road posting has nothing to do with the Scott County side. The Scott County road is designed to handle that truck traffic. The reason they post it is so that large trucks do not turn on the road in the spring and go down to the gravel part and get stuck or damage the road. So it's posted more for the Dakota County side, not the Scott County side. So what we would be encouraging the applicant developer to tell his potential users is that the Dakota County side is not, is only a five-ton road. So that will be posted each spring. Right-of-way dedication is 60 feet, he's aware of that. Right turn lane on County 62. They need to provide detailed plans to the County Highway Department and an access permit is required for that access and turn lane. Site distance on 46. So the comment here is traffic that would be going west on 62 and their visibility to the south. The site distance does meet minimums. So our county access inspector did go out last week. He had been out there a few months ago. It does meet minimums for what would be considered a stoppage distance. So that means a vehicle traveling north on 46 would have enough distance to stop should somebody pull up. That doesn't mean it's a fully, the best intersection it can be. What they're recommending in that comment here is, you can see, based on contours right here, there's a couple of gnolls. So what they want to talk with the developer about is, this is within the county right-of-way, but maybe grading these two high points out, or maybe three high points out, and making that more of a slope down to the county ditch. Taking those small hills out would improve the site distance to the south. So that is something that they would recommend. If they will talk to the developer about having that, as well as removal of some hay bale storage that they noticed in the county right-of-way. And then removal of any field access on County Route 46 and 62. So again, this memo was just given to the planning commission ahead. The developer had not received it yet. We wanted to present it to everybody because we just received it this afternoon. I think New Market Township has indicated we've been in contact with their engineer, with their attorney. Their attorney had drafted a preliminary agreement. So any subdivision is required to have a development agreement between the developer, township, and county. That is drafted by the township attorney. I know he had done a preliminary draft of that. That requires the developer to construct the development according to the approved plans. And also post financial security with the county and township to ensure that they will build what they're proposing to build here. That means roads and stormwater infrastructure. The county and township hold a letter of credit for 125% of the cost to build this project. So if the developer walks away, the county and township would have funding to either put this back or, you know, basically take care of what will be left here. There are a couple of members from the township board here if you have any questions for the township. I think I will stop my comments at this point, wait for any additional questions. But based on the conditions in the staff report and reviewing with county staff, we feel we can recommend approval to the planning commission subject to those conditions being addressed prior to county board consideration. So this would not go to the county board until we have approved plans and everything in those conditions is addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. I'll start with the planning commission. Anyone have questions?
I have several, Mr. Chair. Greg, the infiltration ponds and the stormwater ponds, so they're all going to be put in place ahead of time. As each, if and when each lot sells, someone will have different sized buildings and so on. So they will need to address infiltration ponds or stormwater runoff. It will all be in place regardless of the size of their building or blacktop parking lot or whatever.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hartman, typically what is being done here and developers here to correct me, but the maximum hard surface, new hard surface or impervious surface that's allowed by ordinance is 75%. So any commercial, industrial, business lot can cover 75% with parking, building, storage. That is what they designed this to. So they designed this subdivision to anticipate a 75% coverage for all the businesses that are going to go in here. So if this plan gets approved and this infrastructure goes in, what we do when the individual lots come in is we review their independent site plans and make sure that they conform to the overall plan. So if they're proposing, so if the business on Lot Young comes in here and wants to change something, we would run that by the county and township engineer to make sure that it's still going to work according to the approved project plans. But we're anticipating a 75% impervious surface number. So we would assume that each of these lots would build out with their parking, storage, building area to 75%. And then they just need to meet that requirement.
Question? On the right-of-way, the power line, you can't, so they may, some of them may, if they get permission, they may be able to put a septic system or drain field on that right-of-way. I'm assuming it would not be a mound system, right?
They could.
They could put a mound?
We've seen both. I mean, it's usually a low mound, so typically the power companies just don't want to see structures. So we don't allow structures within an easement. So you couldn't, you couldn't put up a, you know, you have your principal building in the front, you couldn't put up a small shed in the power line easement. But they have allowed, you know, mound systems are five to six feet. So typically, if it comes to structure, that would be a possibility, if they get permission.
And then adding on to that, Greg, they probably wouldn't be able to put materials or fences and stuff like that up? It has to be open for, so it really may not be able to be used too much, I suppose? It has to remain open?
They have to get written permission from the easement holder to use it for some underlying purpose. So the power company has easement rights over that. So if one of those businesses wants to come in and use that for storage of landscape, let's say it's a landscape operation, store landscape rock and mulch and stuff in there, they would need permission from the easement holder to utilize that space.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I get what you're saying. We have to first take a look at approving this layout and then later look individually at the applicants that would want to be on the slot. But there was so much concern about the roads and the traffic and everything else that I read. I can't believe the developer doesn't have some idea of what nature or type of business is going to attract in this part. And I'd like to ask him that question.
Mr. Jerry Heans.
Yes, if you want to come up to the podium.
Hi, I'm John Mussenberg. The businesses that we know of at this time, there's two landscape businesses, auto body shop, and the property owner is going to run his farm and his business out there. That would be on the very east lot. And I think there's interest in a couple of repair sites out there. I mean that, and I mean, and the question is, it's hard for us to tell you landscaping right now because we don't know that those building sites, right? And to answer the other question, we did design it for seventy-five percent. We made sure we have enough room for all the water right now. Everything is designed for seventy-five percent. So they can go smaller, but we've already covered it. Depending on what side the building is, we're already covered on our mitigation for the stormwater and our infiltration.
I'm just trying to get a feel for traffic, you know, different types of commercial businesses attract different amounts of traffic. And it seems to be so much concern from the people around about the road and the road use, so.
Yeah. But we, we originally, when the first design came in, that's probably a year, maybe a year or over a year and a half ago, it was showing as a through street. And it did line up because most of the time they want you to line your streets up with an existing street. And we pulled that out. We changed all the smaller lots due to some septic issues to larger lots to keep the, there would be a less impact against the residential portion of this development. There's only one lot that faces that, and that's got a four-foot berm running east to west right off of the county road. And there is a row of evergreens planted on that for full coverage year-round. And every time you get somebody in here, you'll add to that depending upon what type of business they're going to have. So it's hard for us to predict that at this time. But Greg pretty much covered everything. I mean, we've got all the septics approved, all the borings were done and turned in today. We had about a page and a half from Megan on stuff that we needed to redo for the plan, and we submitted all that. And it's all been approved except for the borings, and the borings were done and turned in today. So I'm anticipating we'll have a clear tomorrow that everything is done. I don't know of anything else that we're supposed to do at this time unless Greg does or a letter came in that we don't know of. I didn't see the letter from the highway department.
Yep.
But I agree with that letter a hundred percent. I mean, that, that's easy for us to do, to change those three little grading issues along the frontage road because there is a little issue there. But that's actually county property, that's not ours. And Jim and his wife donated two and a half acres of property to the county, to the highway department for realignment of that road in the future. That came right off the back. So there is plenty of room there to redo that, and I'll meet with Craig and then I'll tell us what to do and our engineers will just design that and regrade it for the rest of it. So.
Mr. Chair, approximately how much, what is the elevation difference between the business park property and the residential home which is to the north?
I want to say twenty-five to thirty feet, pretty high. There's sixty-five feet of elevation on this piece of property, low to high. That's why originally we tried to put in a common septic because it was really, really a tough piece to make work with individual septics. But we got it to work. We took a bunch of lots out, we got all the septics to work, but there is some elevation on it. I don't think they'll be able to see into the park because the park is so much higher and our entrance is down at the cemetery. We moved, we actually moved that down about.
How many?
Yeah, it was moved down quite a bit, you know, to keep everything away from residential homes. So we're, we're coming in, I think, just about across from the cemetery right now. Everything will be in and out. We will not generate any traffic going to the east. You know, all our traffic will come off the frontage road, they'll make a right or a left end and turn directly into the park. And if you look at the elevation, the road is lower. I mean, we pushed everything to the back. You're really not going to know what's there. You're going to see it probably the building on Lot Two and Lot Four. I don't think you're going to see anything else. And by the time you screen that, that should take care of, you know, any noise. But I mean, granted, it's a, it's an industrial park, so.
I have a question with regard to the, the line of sight from Black Walnut Drive and Rice Lake Drive. I've, I drove that a couple of times to try to get some sense on how these residential homes, which are very impressive, how they're going to view this industrial park. And the worst thing I can think of is if we don't have this berm properly and/or landscape properly, no one's going to want to walk, drive off that street, look at cranes and whatever would go into a facility. And I, I think the guidelines for the county are fairly broad with regard to the types of businesses they would allow in an industrial park. So I think it's unlimited, really. I mean, I would think short of having a heavy and industrial manufacturing facility that creates noise and/or.
It's not designed for manufacturing. It would shock me if you'd have any type of manufacturing in there.
You're really focused, this is really on kind of like an office condo system and/or a business.
It'll be more like an office shop type system. Those are the people that have contacted us. I mean, the list that I gave you, we've already talked to those people. They're interested in buying a lot out there with that type of business. There's not a, there's not a home for those businesses all over. I mean, they have to go somewheres. This property's been zoned for a long time for commercial. I, the businesses that are going in there, I think are pretty low impact. But there again, until, you know, there's a purchase agreement signed, we don't know. Those are the people that have had interests out there. Jim has been in business for a long time. They're down the road by, by the truck stop. They've been there forever. They're moving in. But most of these businesses are over the back of this hill. You're looking right at it. The property falls off to the south. If you look at the grades, once that berm is put up along here, you know, you're going to have to give the trees a few years to grow in, but you really aren't going to see too much. I mean, you can see the grades fall back off to the south.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, so this is the street view from Black Walnut Drive. So as Mr. Messenbrink said, there is, there is a hill on the front. The road's at about ten fifty-six and I think the top of the hill is like ten seventy-four. So it's about twelve, fifteen, twenty feet up. And then right across from where the road is, when I switch back, that's where they're proposing to add the berm. So the road is right here, and then they're proposing to berm from that high point going east. And then that would be a four-foot, topped with juniper shrubs, and then right across from the road would be five to six-foot spruce trees. So Mr. Messenbrink has done development in Savage, Charlie, everywhere. You know, we initially talked about a higher berm, but I think his response is the trees won't grow, the higher you go. So the hope is that you can do a lower berm and keep the trees alive, you know, so planting five to six foot on top of those and try and block that view as you come out of that And then as we indicated, the additional landscaping would be reviewed as each, as each lot comes in with their application. We look at what those uses would be and then, you know, identify where that screening needs to take place.
I think that you have a question on the line. Mr. Watts, is there any further questions?
I think so. I, you know, I'm still spinning around on the types of businesses, but we're going to have an opportunity to take a lay an eyeball on that when they come before us for approval. I guess we're not going to be seeing Ames Construction or UPS system there.
I don't think so. It's not, the development isn't really set up for that type of use. If you drove out and looked at it, it's probably the, one of the hardest pieces of property we've developed, and I've been doing this for forty-seven years.
Long time.
It's not an easy piece. It, I think it would have been a little easier had we been able to put in a different type of septic system because we could have common graded bigger areas. But when you can't do that, you have to leave, you can't put a septic in a graded area. That area has to remain untouched. And all those boxes and everything that you see for the septics, we have to work around all those, and the same with the retention and our infiltration. Those are items, there's five wetlands out there that we weren't allowed to remove. They have to stay there. So all our retention has to be run back to feed those wetlands. So it was not an easy project. It, it turned out good, I think, and I think you'll, you'll see some good businesses out there. And there's a need, I mean, in Scott County for this. There just is. It, you know, you'll never do a development like this where everybody's going to be happy. Just this is going to happen. But you do the best you can to work with what you've got, and that's the way this property is zoned. And we've done whatever we could, with the county and the township too, you know, to bring it back to the best result that's possible.
Question for Mr. Wagner. Based upon the traffic study that the Scott folks did, this is, you know, both of these roads are, I think, forty-six and sixty-four. They're two-lane roads, and what is the max minute, miles per hour is fifty miles per hour, right?
They're fifty miles per hour.
Fifty. I think there's a safety issue there. I'm not going to make any decisions regarding recommendations on that, but I'm just saying that I see a problem with that. My questions are answered by Mr. Messenbrink. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any further questions? Do the board have any further questions from Mr. Wagner at this point? At this time, we'll open it up to the public. If you'd like to make comment, just step up to the podium.
I'm part of the public. I'm also a Newmarket Township supervisor. My name is Doug Disold, and thank you for hosting this meeting. Township does have some concerns about this project. This project came before the township, as Mr. Messenbrink mentioned, with a shared septic system a few months ago. The township did not want to be liable for that septic system. At that time, the project was projected to have thirteen sites, and yet we had not seen any plat or any indication of how this project might lay out. So we voted to not recommend this project. This project came before us last month, and it was talked about that it would have ten sites as opposed to the thirteen, and yet we had not seen a plat. So obviously, this project is a very fluid, moving project. It's, it's moving week to week, month to month. And one thing, the biggest concern I had standing here listening to this, and this is a concern, the township has not seen this nor have they recommended it. So anything you vote on tonight, you will be voting on something the township has not seen or recommended. And that, to me, sounds like a huge problem. Another one, and this, as a supervisor of the township, I would think the county also, we can't think about what's going to happen tomorrow. We have to think about what's going to happen twenty, thirty, forty years from now. It's not good enough to say what might go in those buildings. We have to say what could go in those buildings, what is the possible worst-case impact for the residents and the community. We don't know that. And at the very least, I would like to know the aggregate worst-case scenario that this project could have on our roads, on neighborhoods, signage. We don't have any idea of that. Could each one of those buildings have a hundred people? We don't know, not likely, but it could happen. So at the very least, if we approve something like this, and again, it would be sold without the township's recommendation, that's why, because we haven't seen this. If you approve this, I can't imagine approving it without some knowledge of what the aggregate impact would be to the community. So that's the, the issues. I have several other smaller issues, but I suspect that our chair, Doug Foss, has some comments on that as well. But again, we have not seen this. So I thank you for listening to our concerns. I'm not saying that I'm against this project in general, but it has some issues that have not yet been dealt with. And at the very least, we owe it to the residents and the county to know what the aggregate impact is going to be.
Thank you. And thank you for coming. It's so good to see township representatives here. We really appreciate that input. Helps us.
Thank you.
Greatly. So other township board members that'd like to make comments at this time, certainly can come up.
I want to listen.
Okay. It's an open podium, we could take it any time. I don't want to force anybody. So we do have an open podium. When you come up, just start with your name and make your comments, and we'll have plenty of time for everyone, so let's move forward.
I'm Ann Lindgren, and this is my husband Greg. And we are the property owners of the lot, I don't know, Mr. Wagner, if you can bring up the property. We are at one-one-four-two-six, two-hundred-and-forty-fifth Street, directly to the north of the proposed development. As of two years ago, that, I think we're one, if you can zoom in a little closer, yes, we are the one you were pointing to, right there. So as of two years ago, the property across from us was zoned urban business reserve, if I'm correct, which when I look back in county information, that is one building structure per forty acres. And somehow in the last two years, this has gone very quickly. To us being informed last June second, that it is now rural business reserve and we are now neighbors to a fieldstone industrial park. As you can imagine, extremely emotional, a very upsetting. We have been in our property for twenty-two and a half years. We were in there before the developments came in. We were the family that fought the county on taking out our front yard to put the road in. At that time, the county took out our screenings from the property across the road, and they moved all our trees to the southwest corner of our property. And so we, right now, I don't know if you took a picture of our property looking at what this new site is, because I know you have the road properly. But our property looks directly across. We now have two large orange, that, you just passed it up, that was our, right back in there, those beautiful pine trees used to be in front of what's going on. This is our property right here with the horseshoe driveway, right next to the cemetery, which is where the road is proposed. We no longer have any screenage across the front, and property above us or across from us is quite high, there's quite a high elevation. We can see that area right now is all orange, snow fence for the septic property, which is on the side of a hill. So the screenage that you're talking about putting in to block out Black Walnut does nothing to block our view of what's going on. We lived through the sewage going through, we lived through the power lines going through, we've lived through the rezoning. It's, it's, it's just a continual zoning change that it, this, as you said, seems to be moving very quickly. And to get answers from our township, you know, we got the notification on June second, where, you know, the proposal says to, you know, the township is going to have it in their June meeting, which was June first. So even if we wanted to speak to the township about it, which I did, we had no time to do it. So, you know, our first thing when we got our letter was the emotional devastation of, oh my God, who wants to live across from an industrial park? We have spent twenty-two years making the property the best we can for the neighborhood and for, for ourselves. and for ourselves. The infrastructure, that is a very dangerous curve coming around Pillsbury. I leave for work at 6:30 in the morning, and that is a very dangerous corner, whether it's the semis coming down Pillsbury or the traffic, totally non-existent truck traffic on 245th, which is not the case. When Mr. Messenbrink said that the traffic would all be going to the west and not to the east, I wish you could control that, because that's not the case. Believe me, I watch the cars zooming by, the semis coming through, the industrial traffic coming through on a daily basis. So the value of our property, that is just unbelievable. The infrastructure, 245 between Pillsbury and Dodd is maybe a mile long, and half of it, a quarter, you know, we are a quarter mile from the gravel, and the number of cars that go zooming down and then turn around and come back when they hit that, it is a major thoroughfare of high school students flying through there, families coming through. It's not those of us that live in the community that use that road. It's everybody else that knows that it's a shortcut through that part of Scott County. Our area of Scott County is not a destination. We call the county sheriff, and they tell us we're part of Dakota County. We can't get help when we need it there, and now it's going to be a destination of an industrial park, which could bring increase to crime, but for sure will bring increased If the industrial park does go in, we definitely, you know, hope that the conflict that you're going to have with neighboring residential, that you are going to be good neighbors. The stormwater that we have from when the road went in, our property floods every time we get heavy rain from what was done originally when the road was put in. That Scott County has still not fixed. Every once in a while, they come through more big boulders in the ditch. Our well water, what's going to happen when we now have ten new septic systems across the hill, which is, what did you say, the difference in elevation? This is an elevation that is above us, not we're above them. So we can, we will definitely see everything. The noise pollution, the light pollution. I look out at 4:30 in the morning when I'm getting up for work, and it's pitch black outside. The light pollution. What are going to be the hours of operation of these businesses that are going in? How can you be good neighbors if you are, you know, running your business and have your lights on all the time? Screenage, you're concerned about the screenage for black walnut, and I heard nothing about screenage for our property. If this is going to go in, I would like the county to require the developer to put screenage in all along this area, and I would like it to be put in before any of the other lots are sold, so that all of the trees and the screenage and whatever all looks the same and all has a chance to develop at the same time. I don't want somebody coming in ten years from now and buying a lot and putting in little pine trees when somebody else was required to put them in, you know, right now as you're doing it. So if this, in fact, does go through, I would like the county to require the developer, we would like that that is done now. We don't know how long this development is going to take place. It sounds like Mr. Messenbrink might know, Missenbrink might know more than we do. The berm of four to six feet is not enough to cover what we are going to be able to see. Another issue that somebody brought up was, you know, the garage doors. Are they all going to be facing in towards that road so that we don't have that traffic or that view? But it sounds like from our property, we're going to have the view of the yards that are going to be to the back and not, I think I heard Mr. Wagner say that the fenced-in areas would be required behind buildings. Well, on at least three of those lots, those behind buildings would be facing our property. The size, the heights of the buildings, you know, what kinds of businesses, those things have been addressed. That plat, as was in the agenda, is no longer accurate because septic things have been moved. The building site locations, those, if the, I don't know if those are the required building site locations. But I would like, you know, we hope that you'll take into consideration, for those of us that have been in the neighborhood for a long time, we ask you to table this until all of you have had an opportunity to visit this site, not only from our front yard, because we are the ones that can see this property more than black walnut and our neighbors, because they still have some screenage. But I would like you to, we would like you to table it until you have a chance to visit the site and to visit the intersection of County Road 42 and Pillsbury, or 42 and 62 there, because it is dangerous and it is a two-way stop. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, Greg, that Larson, just curious, that Larson Lane, is that going to come out, like, right across from their property?
No, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hartman, so their property's right here, it'll be more like across from the cemetery.
Okay. That's right.
There's a portion of the cemetery that's undeveloped, and according to when I looked at, so the cemetery and then undeveloped, and then our property starts, and it looks like it's in that undeveloped area. So it basically is right across.
So Mr. Mazerbrink mentioned most of the traffic will be turning west from there. Thank you.
Open the open.
Good evening. Tom Grant, I'm a resident of Black Walnut addition. And, you know, there's approximately forty-five properties that are going to be impacted by this development. It includes those within Black Walnut addition, which includes Black Walnut Drive, Rice Lake Drive, A-Drive, and then, of course, the... I just want to be clear, you know, our rights, right, and needs can't come at the expense of the two folks who are developing this, right? We've invested time, money, energy in building this neighborhood and improving this neighborhood. And a development like this puts that community at great risk. Likewise, I received this letter on a date of 5/28, right around June 2nd as well. And it's the first time me, my family, my neighbors, right, were made aware that this is going on, right? And, you know, because of that, we even had an opportunity to really kind of vet and understand all of this but for what's been published in the agenda and what's been communicated this evening. But it's been advised, right? At this point, there's no specific plan later on, types of industry that are going to be permitted here in this development, which leaves me more anxious about what are the issues we're going to face here in the future? What types of businesses will be established? What types of clientele will it attract? And what impact ultimately does that have on our community, right? So that is context. I do have several overarching concerns, some of which have already been mentioned, but I think are worth reemphasizing for the sake of this discussion. Number one, and this is really in no specific order, right, the light pollution. And most of these buildings are going to have to be lit up for some kind of security purpose. What does that do for lighting? What does that do? We just already heard, right, about how in the evenings or in the mornings, you can wake up, and we're, we don't have a lit-up skyline. That's one of the reasons why we live where we live. That's at risk. Noise pollution has already been mentioned, right? We're talking about traffic increasing in that space. We're talking about, we've already heard, potentially contractor yards, those type of things. These are folks who get going pretty early in the morning and in some cases, return pretty late at night. Now we've got to deal with that as a potential issue. Traffic safety has also been discussed. Just to elaborate that further, I think a couple of comments to make. The intersection of 245th and Pillsbury is dangerous. It is. That intersection, when one is heading west on 245th, looking to turn right to head northbound on Pillsbury, it's not a left-right-left intersection. It's a left-right-left-left intersection. And that's for a passenger vehicle that can accelerate. Now we're talking about running heavy trucks in and out of this potentially, who ultimately have to swing wider just to turn onto that lane? That's dangerous. It's incredibly dangerous. And my concern is not a matter of if somebody gets killed, it's a matter of when. So how will those safety factors ultimately be addressed, right? I don't think shaving down a couple of nodes on that right-of-way is going to solve that problem. I think it's far greater concern than what's being addressed here. We talked about also types of business. I want to also mention, right, we heard auto body, we heard repairs. Is the environmental plan actually designed to handle those types of businesses? An auto body shop is using paint, solvents. How is that stuff being handled? How will that ensure that water quality issues, whether that be ground water or impact to the Vermillion watershed? Vermillion River is a quarter mile away from where we live. How is that going to be addressed? Crime is also a concern. We know break-ins and thefts at commercial properties just north of us at the intersection of County Road 46 and County Road 29. Already, that development has had break-ins. This is going to attract criminal elements to break into open yards, okay? Now you're talking about a development in residential property right adjacent to this? That's an easy target. So how is that going to be addressed? So the net effect of this is quality of life for us. And while there's, I'm sure, to the property owner and the developer, what's our quality of life going to be like as a result of this, right? Will our property values be impacted as a result of this? How will prospective homebuyers think about buying this eventually when we decide to move on? When our kids are out of the home, off and on their own, how are we going to be marketing a piece of property that's adjacent to a industrial park? Those things have to be considered. And I guess I'd also ask, as you think about these concerns, how does this feel if this was right next to you? So he asked from my perspective, some have already been addressed. But first, I think a thorough traffic review and impact study on safety, the condition of those adjacent roads, needs to take place before this can move forward. Traffic control at that intersection is already in need. On top of that, I think the statement I'd echo on the previous comments here around traffic only going westbound on 245th, just in and out, I don't believe that's a true statement either. Especially when you think about this property being developed for commercial purposes, where there's actual consumers coming in and out, service customers, et cetera. Navigation's generally going to take you the shortest route. The shortest route right now, if you're coming out of Lakeville, if you're coming southbound on Dodd Road, is not going to take you out to Pillsbury and into 245th. It's going to take you south on Dodd Road and west on 245th, coming in from Dakota County. So I think that's not an accurate statement to suggest at all, based upon the types of businesses that may go in there, that that road is a one-way street. I completely disagree with that premise. Also asking, the neighborhood has input and final improvement on all screening and lighting plans to ensure that our property values are maintained, to ensure that our quality of life is not denigrated at the expense of this project. Also, I'd like to understand how buildings and lots below this line, or buildings and lots should be below grade. So again, we're not seeing the peaks of these buildings. We're controlling light as a result. We want input in on that. Restriction on building heights, I think, also should be considered. Again, we don't know what's going in here. So again, what assurances do we have on building heights? And then, you know, I touched on environmental impact. I understand from the county's kind of checklist, if you will, it seems to me that it meets those needs. But again, I just heard tonight, auto body shops, right? So again, what is the environmental impact? And is there a study that's going to begin around some of these other activities that weren't necessarily scoped out in terms of how this land's going to be planted? And then, I think also, we talked about crime concerns around that. What's the public safety plan to ensure that crime doesn't increase as a result of this development? How's that going to be managed? 911 call to the Scott County Sheriff's Department, as discussed, isn't as smooth as 111 with a 911 call. There is a debate. There is an argument about whether or not we're in Scott County, Dakota County. That does happen. That needs to be addressed. I found it interesting to hear supervisors' comments around township hearing. So one of the things I think we ask, just given that this is the first time we heard about this, right, it's from this letter, that we have the opportunity to address our concerns in the same manner we're doing here to the township, because we haven't had that opportunity. There was no public notice sent to us as a result of it. That's unacceptable. And then lastly, just want to make sure that, should our other concerns not be listened to, that we get written notification of all conditional use permits, every single one of them, so that we have the opportunity to address them on a case-by-case basis. The end of the day, I think that's a massive inconvenience for everybody living in this space, because ultimately, we're living on pins and needles from now until God knows when. We don't know when this gets developed. So we're holding our breath every single time we're seeing a conditional use permit. We're going to hold our breath every time, single time, we see some prospective customer come in and look at a piece of property. That's concerning. So I ask that you take these asks into consideration, as well as those that several of my neighbors, I'm sure, also share. I appreciate your time. I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
Thanks.
I am Eric Venky. I'm also a resident of Black Walnut. I'm probably one of the newest additions to the neighborhood. My wife and I and our two kids meet there. We're south of Montville for a number of years, grew a family and a little bit more space. We were looking for quite a while and found the neighborhood, and just from not even stepping foot in, we loved it. So very lucky to be ended up there, neighborhood, the neighbors, everything. Wife and I kind of read this letter, so potentially having here is crushing, just the impact too, to have stability and... It's our forever home. I look at the development, and I think it still has a couple of things that could really be fixed if it ends up going through. Traffic is obviously a big one. We need, also, the kids go to daycare every day. We're going to Lakeville. And because the kids are in the car, we're not going to Pillsbury. We're going to zip over to Dodd, drive a road, just safety to the kids. I think there's been a lot of concern about that, and it probably will be forever with the traffic scene. Additionally, with the development of that size, it looks like there's some allowance for it, why traffic wouldn't go directly out to Pillsbury, feed that development. With the potential future of that Messelbrink Road going to the south, it's aimed at that next lot south to expand industrial development that way. Would that further then bring more traffic off of 42, 62 down? And that's coming from both ways. And on 62, feed that next lot south. That's another thing that's been brought up. We're not looking for twenty years, forty years beyond that. I compare a lot of the conversations, like light pollution, a lot of this there, and I prefer our kids to be healthy. A lot of that would be lost in that. Somebody had said, and I speak to it enough, but... Anybody else you want? Manors, these repair, sitting next to you with forty-foot racks of engines and parts and stuff, right outside your door where you have to lift and jump. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, something's been coming up. Greg just talked about lighting, building height, and building height and...
Berm.
It keeps coming up, and we have those restrictions. Can you just maybe run through what they are? No matter who comes in here, that they know a building can't be really high, lighting can be...
Restrictions.
Yeah, it's my helpful.
Take your minute there, Greg.
Yeah. Just going to get some...
So in the, in the commercial districts, commercial industrial districts, building height, we do have maximums now. It is 45 feet, so it is high. So that would be probably the biggest impact is height of building. Now, what the individuals propose to build, we don't see a lot of height five-foot tall buildings. But that would be the standard that those lots would be under. Have to, that's what the ordinance currently allows, so. In regards to lighting, lighting is required to be hooded and cannot be directed at neighboring properties. So what I would say with lighting is, our standards are very similar to what you're going to see in any other community when you're talking about lighting on buildings. So typically, it's going to be hooded lighting that's over a door, that shines on that door, like security lighting. Or in a parking lot, the lighting is hooded and shines down. So it cannot be directed to shine off the property onto adjacent residences. We have light standards for how much the intensity can be off the property. I know probably the commission's most familiar with the baseball lighting. That was just approved at St. Patrick's. And it's like one foot candle is the maximum on a public street. And it has to be less than that when it hits an adjacent property. So most commercial businesses, what you're going to see is that hooded lighting that's faced down at the doors or at the parking area. It doesn't shine out onto, or it can't shine out onto adjacent.
Mr. Chairman, real quick question. Mr. Wagner, what is the height of industrial lighting for a parking lot?
They would be 14.
Lighting standards show not exceed 25 feet in height. Or the height of the principal building along with all the conditional.
So the lights would be lower than the building itself?
25 feet or the height of the principal building.
Okay, so up to 45 feet?
Yes.
Thank you.
The environmental one, Mr. Johnson, that's a good one to bring up. So our county environmental services department, they review septic and wastewater. But another role is also licensing commercial industrial businesses throughout Scott County. So not only the township areas, but within cities. So any business that, be it auto repair or landscaping, or if you have a painting business, anything that would have what would be classified as hazardous waste is required to be licensed by the county as a hazardous waste generator. They have annual inspections. So if you deal with any chemicals, you are required to maintain a license issued by the county that shows that you are properly containing those chemicals, dealing with the waste, and properly disposing of them. So that's any business, whether it's a landscape operation and they change the oil in their vehicles, they are required to have a hazardous waste license and maintain that license annually. So that's a standard condition of any conditional use permit and of environmental services. So any business that goes in here will be inspected by environmental services to see if they're changing oil or if they're housing gasoline through, you know, fueling their vehicles, they have to have a license.
All right.
I'm Beth Ilerz. I'm affected to some degree by this. I do not practice what these individuals are, but I will be affected by it, and I'll explain why. I find it interesting that there's a concept here, that the gentleman over here said that there is a need for this kind of development because there's need for large pieces of land, for industrial park, for outdoor storage, that kind of stuff. And yet the gentleman who's developing this tells us that's going to be office space. He said that, he said office space. But then again, he also talked about automobile places, he talked about landscaping, storage, those kinds of things. So there's a lot of confusion as to what's going on there. And I don't believe he's really developing this on spec. I suspect he does know who's coming. I'm sure there's some people that are knocking on their store screen that this is the envelope. So I'm a little confused on that. The other thing I'm confused about is that there was discussion about the interceptor line and the septic that all happened there. And yet, all these properties are going to have their own septic. So that concerns me because I have a well system there, not too far from there where this property is going to be at. And I'm concerned about the well, about the groundwater. So I understand the county does their inspections, but has there been an environmental impact study done? That Vermillion watershed, that Vermillion River is a critical habitat. And that really needs an environmental impact for a development this size. And this is incisible development. So I'm concerned about that. There was discussion about that this would be, that one or two of the businesses would be landscaping. I can tell you as a Eureka Township resident, that the problems with Scott, Eureka Grove and 225th there are ongoing with the people that live by there. They are running hours a day that they're not supposed to be, they're driving on roads they're not supposed to be on, they're dumping things they're not supposed to be dumping, they're storing things they're not supposed to store. Ongoing trouble. I do have to laugh internally, or maybe out loud a little bit. The gentleman says that no one will turn east on 225th. I can tell you from experience on a daily basis, that FedEx built on County Road 70 and Dodd Road long before they tore up County Road 70. I know when it's eight o'clock because there was a parade of FedEx trucks coming down Dodd Road. Not a one of them turns right to go onto County Road 70. The same thing is going to happen over here. The road traffic on Dodd Road and 250th or 225th is going to increase significantly because they're going to do what they want. They're going to take the least, the quickest route. But you can't control that. I know that Eureka Township has signage up on a number of their roads to restrict some of the trucks. It's ignored. It's ignored. And what concerns me is that this development is way out on the edge of Scott County and plus up to Dakota County. And so they're kind of off the map. So who's watching? Who's keeping an eye on, making sure that the water's not getting polluted? That these holding ponds are going to be good and safe and doing what they're supposed to be doing? That the traffic is supposed to go where they're supposed to be going? I'm a little concerned about that. And you had mentioned that you had talked to all of the neighboring, did you talk to Eureka Township? Are they aware of this? Because this directly affects them.
What was the...
You said you had talked to neighboring townships about this development?
We've talked to New Market Township, who we work with.
Okay. But you mentioned a number of other townships that you talked to though.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I understand. So during the county's comprehensive plan process, we meet with Scott County townships. We did not deal with the county.
Okay, so I'm just curious, is Eureka Township aware that this development is going on? They, and if I could, I got kind of the last minute notice as well. Which is concerning because we just went through this battle in Eureka Township. Because we didn't want commercial development either, for the similar reasons. And I'm not exactly sure how run in Scott County. But if Eureka Township is running a commercial development, they're not set up to do it. They don't have the inspectors, they don't have all those folks that are going to basically make sure that the rules are followed by some companies that could really pollute the groundwater that we all rely on. And obviously, I'm very concerned about, as Ben mentioned a number of times, and I understand this has been explained, the light pollution. But I can still tell you that County Road 70 and Dodd Road blows now because of FedEx, and their lights are pointed down. And we already, you guys are already talking about fixing the road because it's not safe. It's about to get much more worse when you start talking about big trucks trying to make a turn on a blind curb, and that is a blind curb. I would really encourage you all to think long and hard about this because there's no turning back once you say yes. I just, I have a lot of concerns about this, this development. And the Vermillion watershed, that needs an environmental impact study done. I think you definitely need a road study done. And the traffic that's going to increase is just going to be... Thank you.
Thank you. Greg, can you bring up that street-level view of the intersection at the stop sign? That's kind of where I want to start. My name is Steve Castle, I've lived in New Market Township for 18 years. I've lived near Pillsbury for the entire time. And during those 18 years, we've definitely seen more traffic and speeds increase. The average posted speed limit here is 55. If you're driving 55, you can pass down Pillsbury, it's back to life. So here we are at the stop sign, looking southbound. You can see a turning lane, you can see a hill. Currently, there are bales of hay, I'm not sure when this picture was taken. But really, I believe previously you talked about taking out some of that hill, some of that berm there. You're probably not going to get much more sightline visibility by doing that. The reason being is you're looking at a curve and the road also slopes down, okay? So you have two things working against you. I'd like to share with what my 15-year-old mentioned to me last week, excuse me, when we were at this intersection. He said whoever designed this intersection and built it must have failed geometry because all your angles are wrong. And I would like to reiterate what everybody's said so far about this being a dangerous intersection, okay? When someone is traveling 60 miles an hour northbound right here, you have three to four seconds. I tell my teenage drivers every time they leave, you wait. You see a headlight, you see a piece of chrome come around that curve, you wait. Do not try to judge what lane they're in, do not try to judge their speed. This is their risk every day, every day. And for all the people here, that is our risk, okay? Now, in terms of a proposed industrial park, I have no problem with development. I've been living in the seven county metro area my entire life. It's, again, a fact of life. You live here and we're going to see development. But I want to see the infrastructure first, okay? This intersection demands study for a roundabout, period. We're way past due on it. In between County Road 70 and 19 down by Northfield, we have three roundabouts, three. And there's no doubt in my mind, for any traffic study you could do, that those three roundabouts have saved lives over the last 10 years. We need one here, and it has to come in first. I don't want to see one truck coming out of this industrial park, regardless of weight, regardless of if they're making a pickup or delivery of freight, which we know, based on previous comment, will happen. There's going to be something along those lines. And every common carrier in the United States deals with either a 40-foot straight or a 75-foot semi truck. You tell me how a 75-foot semi truck is going to make that turn to head northbound onto Pillsbury. They do not have the turning radius, period. I myself, my family, we've run into close calls on these turning lanes, especially having southbound, including most recently a school bus pulled out, and they have to take the turning lane. They have to cut into that lane to make, complete their turn. So really, when you pull out in this intersection, it's kind of a leap of faith. You're relying on the people heading northbound to notice you when that's three to four seconds. You're also relying on people on the southbound lane to signal in their turning lanes and do the right thing. And more often than not, especially for new drivers, I can attest to this, people pull out past the stop line on the road, okay? They think by making that creep out, you're getting a better sightline view of the road. In fact, you're really not. What you're doing is putting yourself in more peril because you can see there is no fog line there, okay? So you pull out a full vehicle length past that stop line, the front of your vehicle is in the line traffic. The previous letter today was a good start from the traffic department studying. I would like to see a better one done personally. The measurements I have taken here show that we have less than half of the recommended Department of Transportation sightline. Okay, we have approximately 250 feet viewing here to the south. Department of Transportation, for a left-hand turn on a 55-mile per hour road recommends 600 feet of visibility. 600, you do not have that here. Okay, if this intersection were to be built today, you would have 600 feet of visibility in all directions. There's no way we have that. And there's no way we can achieve that by taking out this hill. So to reiterate, if this development does go forward with the guidance of this, I would like to see a roundabout studied and implemented first, okay? This is all about traffic safety. I think doing it the right way is going to save lives. So thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Anyone else like to make comments at this time?
I'll take something. Sean Verret, a little on Rice Lake Drive, so we don't see what the public see Black Walnut. One, I'm really concerned that... And a little concerned too that you saw some things that up from New Market was not aware of. These sheet plots. Things have been working on this property for quite some time. Nobody's saying anything until the last minute. I come from Scott County, I'm aware of these things. So I'm going to tell you, I am absolutely not against progress. I think we can move forward with those things. But it concerns me because I'm from Chicago, I pull the wool in my head, I'm not getting the whole story. I think everyone wants to know what the whole story is. I will say certainly on traffic, to what everybody has said here in this room, it has scared the hell out of me. If you're driving, well, kids, southbound, or if you're southbound, you want to make a left-hand turn onto our road, it's County Road 62, you're sitting there for a while as you saw a turn, a right turn, three seconds, and people are flying down that road. There's going to be more truck traffic, I'm seeing it already because of FedEx. Amazon is moving in as well, there's going to be more traffic, I see that on Dodd already. If Scott, if Dakota County decides to put in pavement, decides, you're not going to do any more of that gravel road, put a road there, the traffic is going to increase even more. And I'm going to say, a two-lane road on Scott County 62 is not enough. A roundabout is a really good suggestion. And in fact, I highly recommend doing something like that because even if you were driving, especially if it's even winter, I've always been scared that someone's going to be driving around that turn at a really high speed, will see my headlights and all of a sudden hit the brakes, and I don't have enough speed because I'm on an incline, and I've got to make a left-hand turn. Even if you got all-wheel drive, it's ice, you're in trouble. And why someone hasn't been killed there yet is amazing to me. Because I'm telling you right now, someone is going to die there in a second. I've worked for Federal Highway Administration from years ago, and I would tell you, if you were to look at that, it would show you all sorts of wrong things. So DOT, I think, has to take a look at that intersection and readdress the issue. Because that is absolutely a mess. I've heard everything about lights, I absolutely agree with it. I mean, we're going to have more light. I mean, I've been there for almost 20 years right now. The amount of light pollution that's going on in that area is dramatic. And this is just going to add more to it. I am concerned about the noise, certainly concerned about what businesses are going to move in there. I know that somebody knows what's going to be going in there. And I think that needs to be addressed of what is going to take place. Because I think certainly with climate and everything that's going on, that certainly could happen there. And can those areas support the amount of people that are going to be in these businesses? Rural businesses, what is the rural business? And will these businesses even exist 20 to 40 years from now? I mean, farms are getting bought up, you know, there's big farms and big groups. So the other thing I noticed today is the line that came up about the other road going south of this property. Is that area also another area of potential in the future? It could also be commercial designation as well. Kind of get in the sense of it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think to address that, the main question with the road is, and the interstate activity is, County 46 is, it's kind of the supporting road for Interstate 35. So with the interchanges in Lakeville, 2 and 35, 46 is the main reliever for the interstate. So yes, traffic will continue to increase, especially if something happens at the interchange that this road will continue to get busier. At the interchange, that this road will continue to get busier. It is an A minor arterial, which is one step down from Interstate 35 is a principal arterial. Pillsbury is an A minor, so that's the next step down. So no access would be permitted onto Pillsbury Avenue. So that's the purpose of the road connection to the south is to provide local road connectivity for any property to the south because they would not be, neither of these parcels would be granted an access to 46.
Okay, so those properties, I'm just asking, in that section south of this map, what potentially is going there?
So mainly, it's to provide a connection through from 245th down to 250th. So it's just to connect these two parcels because between 245th and 250th, there would be no new access to County 46. So when, if and when this property would choose to develop, their access would be on 250th.
Great, but what's the line you stated?
It's rural business reserve.
Same thing as what we're looking at right now. So that area is just bigger, potentially, right?
Yep, it's this property, this property, and all these right in here, and then down, kind of down on the park.
On Highway 2, seeing more traffic. So, I mean, it used to be you go to the mix stop, you find, get on the intersection, and you go. That section is worse. This starts going, and then we go south of this business, which we haven't even talked about that yet. Then you're looking Highway 2, and then all the traffic is on DOD. The amount of travel and speed that's going on around this area, there's a lot, there's a lot. And to have a two-lane road there, I think, is insane for that to be the way it's going to be set, with a Band-Aid on it, here you go. But I'd say, number one, traffic is going to be a mess, and I'm concerned about that. And I know people are going down that gravel road. I see it all the time. Nothing stops there, and trucks will go through that after. And then you're going to have the city, Dakota County, going to be asking, what are you doing? Now, they're going to have to make an investment with that. And as I said, if they decide to pave that, that's just going to be more of a rocket road than it is right now. So that's just my piece. I just wanted to share that. It's been enlightening today to be able to understand the work that goes behind this. But I'm more concerned about the fact that we have been in a reasonable time. Less than 30 days, I think it's ridiculous. And the City of Elko, if they didn't know anything about this, you see actual plots like you're showing right now in a graphic, that's, as you shared that information, it's close to this gentleman over here. So disappointed. Hopefully, we get this right. A lot of us want it right. We've lived here for a long time, and we'd like to see it stay that way.
Dr. Chashney, we built our home on Pillsbury Avenue in 94. I'm realizing that our 13 acres is also now, here we are, which means we have the Vermillion River going right through our property and the Vermillion Tributaries. So that is environmental. We've got a land that is industrial park is proposed now, then the acreage right after Just the environmental is not good for that. If you build this one, this is a small industrial park, the next one will be larger. I can't believe that Scott told me we'd allow that to happen in the neighborhood. Also, the traffic, as we pointed out, I have lots of people, everything is going to go to 202. Everything is going to come down Pillsbury to County Road 2. The children in that housing area, they ride their bikes, they're always out, they will not be safe. And that intersection, I drive Pillsbury daily, that intersection, we do three times a week for the powers coming out of 245th because they cannot see us. It is nonsense.
Thank you very much. You want to talk, Mr.?
Hey, hold on, I'm sorry. Hey, good evening, board. My name's Greg Silas. I live in the same development that these other folks live in. And I think, I'm going to keep it short. I think you really need to, before approving this, you need to look at the safety of that intersection. Man, if I had kids, they're starting to drive, that would scare the hell out of me. When I go to that intersection, I do the thing like Tom said, you look left and right and left, and three times to the left. And even when I'm heading north, I'm still got my eye back to the left because there's a lot of traffic passing, and you can't see well enough, even though somebody's saying that it's within guidelines. That's not it. So I guess my ask would be is, before you approve this, that the roundabout, I didn't consider. Sent an email today to you guys with this concern. It is a paramount thing. Because if something does happen there and you prove out additional traffic because of more commercial operations, and that causes an accident, we'll remember this night, and please consider that. And one other thing with the traffic, like Tom was saying, when you pull out of that area, I have a truck and trailer that I use for residential stuff in. It takes a while, you've got to swing out a ways because otherwise your trailer's going to be in the ditch, and that's what all these other commercial trucks will be doing coming out of those. Safety with, or the traffic safety is, you guys have to really consider that before passing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make comments at this time?
Thank you for having us tonight, allowing us to comment. My name's Travis Chashney. I'm one of the younger members in the black walnut community here, and I agree with all the concerns that my neighbors and other residents in the area have brought forth tonight, but I wanted to highlight, our neighborhood has been getting younger in the past few years, but folks who have built these wonderful houses and maintained that neighborhood have decided to move elsewhere, and our younger families have moved in because of what this community is. We moved here because we didn't want to live somewhere where there was high traffic because it was safe for our young families, so that our kids could ride the bikes, not just on the driveway, hook a go around the neighborhood. And if they ended up accidentally out on that main road, we knew they were. So I'm glad to hear the traffic is only going to go to the west. Not true. I'm really glad to hear, you know, a future person who's going to have his landscape business there, you know, the same folks who operate those landscaping companies. My wife was hit by one of the members of that at a parked red light, she was parked at a red light at Mix Stop, which is a main pathway, you know? And we're going to see folks who have, you know, more on their minds, do a job, get stuff done, and we have children that live in this neighborhood. So what I want everyone to think about is not the, you know, we have a lot of maybe selfish reasons, light pollution, and some serious, serious concerns with environmental, but the safety of the children that live in this neighborhood, who have only increased in the past few years, young children. Wish you could have brought my two-year-old daughter tonight, so she could look at you when you make the decision, saying, you know, I'm asking you to think about that. Would you want your family, your grandchildren, living across from a place where you're going to see that kind of increase in traffic in reduction of safety when S has been brought forth? The safety studies obviously haven't been done. Thanks.
Thank you, Travis.
My name's Dan Masson, and I also live in the neighborhood. Thank you all for hosting such an open meeting. Learned a lot. Learned about 45 potential buildings on top of a hill. Really looking through the plan, and we had a very short amount of time to read it, because I did not receive the notification either. I live right on Race Lake Drive, right on the end. The traffic situation is real. The traffic coming from both ways is real. Looking through the plan, it reflects a lot of specificity. Before something like this goes in, I think we need to build that out to really flesh out the details. Where I live, if you wouldn't mind pulling up the view from Race Lake Drive, looking Not going to go on the traffic thing, but absolutely true. I've got two teenage drivers. Scares me to death that they're pulling out there every day, that traffic coming from But we live right there at that intersection. And if you look west, you could somewhat see a little further. Yeah, that's me. That's an old picture. We don't have a flag. I've been there 10 years. So a lot of those trees aren't there. You're looking up into that. I'll be looking right into the back wall, one of the bigger portions of parcels. The four-foot berm is certainly underwhelming, given a tall building, or the potential of tall building, racks, semis, equipment, dump trucks, whatever you're going to park into that, into those lots. Certainly, that screening in the berm plant should be revisited. And the infrastructure does need to come first. We talked roundabout, we talked berm, we talked screening. Really no business plan? It is concerning. And as you can imagine, I echo all the comments here, so thank you all for joining up.
I have a question. That, those buildings, are you talking about that building on the left? When you go down the road on the left?
No, that's, that's only stories.
That's the, that's the farm there?
That is, that is. No, I'm, my, my house is the one you see, so it's way, my view is actually even further yet.
Oh, okay.
So I sit on my back deck, and I'll look right back into that, that infrastructure. So the berm should actually wrap around that corner.
Okay.
And head south a fair amount, 400, 500 feet at least.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's wide open. It doesn't look like that right now. In fact, a lot of those trees aren't even there anymore. Yeah, that picture certainly dated.
I'm Doug Quast, resident of New Market Township and also chairman of the board. I can't think, we got the cart piece for the horse here, which is a little frustrating. We were working with John, the township board, for three, four months on a previous version of this development, which didn't come up. Do you guys know about previous one?
No. What we have?
Mr. Chair, so Mr. Messingbrink, as I indicated, he submitted his application to the county on the May 3 deadline, so that's when the official application to start this process began, once we received an application. Before that, he, as Mr. Quast said, he was meeting with the township for three, four months. I think it started in November, but whatever, the first, the first development plan, the township unanimously rejected. We're at that time, I think, was that 13 lots, John?
I don't remember.
13 lots and...
I don't believe it was the lots, it was something that, that...
We rejected because we had a formless subordinate service district, which the township said, no, I asked the county if they wanted to manage that, and the county said, no way, absolutely not. So anyhow, we rejected that. The board was told at the time that the property could not be developed, three, maybe four lots maximum, the conventional subject system. Now we're at 10. 10 or 11? 10. So I'm really surprised this came up at our board meeting we had the first Tuesday of June. We first heard about it, and they wanted to get the road approved, because the township's responsible for the road. They wanted the township to approve the road before we even saw the path. The town board unanimously rejected that. We said, no, we got to see the whole thing before we... So right now, we haven't had a chance to give you guys written comment of what we want, what, yes, we think it's a good idea, but one, two, three things, we want these things considered, what are... We understand that the county is responsible for the development, and I'm, I'm okay with that. Unless we want to be like Credit River and do our own planning and zoning, which personally I don't want to, it's a big job, but until we do that, we're going to follow the county. And I know the county has ordinance for lights, for roads, and everything. I'm okay with that. The town board in general is okay with landowner rights. If a land, if a piece of land can be developed from a farm into housing development, if it meets all the county codes, the board is really strong on landowner rights. They can, they can do it, if it meets the rules. If it doesn't meet the rules, condition, most recently, the last six, eight months, the township board is not given any waivers, amendments, no, waivers. So that's a little frustrating. You know, like I said, at our board meeting, we heard about it. We said, no, we want to see it before we can even talk to it. So I'm a little frustrated that I even have to come here tonight and talk to you guys. On behalf of the board, I'm talking for everybody, we want to see it first. I would recommend you guys tonight, chairman, I would recommend you make a motion to continue this meeting. Don't adjourn it. Continue it till we, till you guys can acquire more information. I do agree that, that the major issues from the Pillsbury, right turn, is bad. I drive that quite frequently. I left a message, Greg gave me the number for the highway guy, and I was like, what could be done? Do you disagree with the fact that some people are saying the infrastructure has to come first? Well, I agree partially with that, infrastructure has to come first. I don't want to pay for it. I don't know if you guys want to pay for it here. I think the development has to pay for the road, and that's how we kind of go about our township developments, too. They have to pay to get the roads, you know, our engineering services, our lawyers. The developer has to pay for it. I think whatever happens, kind of, or six, if that needs to be changed, the development should pay for that. Because I don't think that, it's not going to bring enough tax to the county or the township to justify it. So I, like I say, I would strongly suggest that you guys wait to hear, not just from me or from Mr. DeSoul, but from the whole board, so we can write down the answers. I think you guys heard enough tonight that we don't really have enough answers. There's a lot of questions, we need more answers. The highway department should be here, number one, to talk about that, that issue. So I guess, I think that's all I have, is just implore you guys to make a motion to continue the meeting. Nine o'clock is way past my bedtime. So any questions or...
No. Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to say one thing. 10 businesses, 45 families.
Anyone else like to make comments?
She kind of prompted me to this. 10 businesses, 45 families. This letter that went out said, we can't fit everybody in this room. That's concerning to me. There might have been a whole lot more people if that lady didn't say that. You know, there's a lot of things that just don't add up.
First off, I want to thank everybody. It's clear to me in listening to this that people have a lot of questions and that a lot of information hasn't gotten out. And part of the process of this is getting the input and trying to make this, whatever happens, the decision for us to make a decision on this, we need to have that kind of input. I know that, sure that the commissioners have a number of comments that they want to make at this point, but whatever action we take is made better. And I know it's nine o'clock, and, and it's hard to, but everybody needs to have an opportunity to speak, and, and I'm a strong proponent of that. And that's one of the reasons that I don't set, I didn't set a limit tonight. I went, and, you know, a lot of times we'll set limits, two, three-minute limits on people talking. I let people talk, and I heard a lot of frustration from a lot of ways about this. And that has an impact on people sitting up here on this commission and, and staff as well. And people listen... And if people listen to, to what's being said. And it's a process and it's a long process and it's, and it's not neat, not easy. But the end result, and I've been at this twenty-eight years on different planning commissions and seen through many, many meetings like this late into the night. And the process is always better when people get up and say, you know, I have a stake in this. I have a stake in this enablement. I have a stake in, 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 in what's happening here. These people who sit up here, are here every month, listening and, and trying to make good decisions on what happens. And we have to try and figure out what's going to be the best. I just wanted to thank everybody first off for, for coming. This time I'm going to go to the commission.
I'm going to make a comment. I just want to comment about this meeting room. Normally we don't leave here. We are remodeling the courthouse. So for about the next year, we're going to be meeting here and we're sorry it's not as big. But this is what we're stuck with, this meeting room.
And if it was a little bit nicer out, we could sit outside perhaps and have a bigger room. Go ahead.
I'd like to address the zoning, any misconceptions with the zoning. I'm just going to put it in my own words. I've been on this board now for quite a few years and so have most of them. But the county staff and board, we've had over the course of two years, had workshops all over the county with townships and cities to prepare for the 2040 comp plan. It was a long, long process and a lot of issues. I don't ever recall any issues with Newmarket Township. The only issues or disagreements that us seven board members had was in Cedar Lake Township. And when it came down to a final vote, it was a four to three. But we're just the prep for the county commissioners and they okayed the planning, the 2040 comp plan and went on to the met council. I just want to, again, in my own words, this, there was some emails or something regarding zoning that caught someone, one or more people off guard. That's what this property is owned for. And it didn't just happen with this development proposed. I think I put that, am I right in explaining it this way? Thank you.
This is Jerry. Now, this property is this area where the project is going for commercial for quite a while. And we talked about this. It's been twenty years since I've been involved in this. This area's been sold this way.
Mr. Chairman? Okay, I'm the youngest member of this team. And I understand, and this is on the commercial. But this particular, I like to talk about the process here. And the process in this particular development feels like ready fire aim to me. I don't think that we went through whatever procedures we should have. We, we, we have other means. We've pleaded for township people to give us input on things and we don't get any. And we have township people here now who say, we didn't get any input. We don't feel like we had a chance to really look at it and really talk to our constituents. And that bothers me a lot. I would love to find a way to slow this down, take a back step, put it back in the hands of the township board, let them do their investigation first because that's how it's supposed to work. And then after they've given us their recommendations or not, because they're the local representatives for this group, then bring it up here. And I know that we can do it. I, I know that it can be built. But just because it can doesn't mean it should. And the process to me is very disconcerting in this particular situation. I just don't think it went too fast. It didn't, it doesn't fit where it.
And, and we don't often hear this when people come in and say, once in a while, you know, that people say, we weren't notified in time or we didn't get adequate notification because there are specific statutes basically that cover when you have notification and the process that we use in terms of it going to the township first. And, and this kind of developed in the sense I get is, is that because of the way that it developed, it came to us. But, you know, we certainly, you know, we have options to the board on, on how to move forward.
Or slow it down?
Yep, yep. And, and we certainly have options to do that. And, and, you know, it's, it's up to the commissioners here and what we want to do. But certainly enough questions to, to look at table and taking in for further information. And then back to the township board for a recommendation. I mean, there certainly could be a traffic study that could be, and I'll just say it. I mean, you know, I was out there today. I was at your house. I sat in front of your house. Beautiful property and I was looking right there at that. I went down, all the way down to the gravel and I noticed that when people come off the gravel, they accelerate about fifteen miles an hour faster as soon as they hit the pavement. Is that true? Is that what you're seeing? Yes, I saw that. And when I came, because I came up from the, actually the west, on the other side of the freeway. But I came up from Elko. When I came around that curve, I knew two Forty-Fifth and Pillsbury is a tight curve, but the sightline bothered me coming around the curve. I'd forgotten. And it helped me to go back and look at it. And I also got to see the elevation of the property and the challenges that the, that the developer has with the property. It helps to go out and look and see what you see every day. And, and I knew that. I know that intersection and I know that's a, that's a tight intersection. And so I, I don't know if it solves every problem and, and you all know that. You know, there's, there's problems here that go far beyond this property. But I do think that there's certainly some questions here on, on, on moving forward on, on what can be the best situation for this. So. And I, and I think there's, I think this is the commission, you know, I have all commissioners here on what they're thinking, but, you know, I just want to share my thoughts on it a little bit. So. And, and at this point, I could ask what people with commissioners like to do at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I think I already started it off by my comments early on about traffic. I came at the intersection eastbound on Sixty-two and northbound on Forty-six. And I was concerned then, and I've done it twice, I'm more concerned every time I do it. I'm really concerned about the elevation, the berming, the protection of lines of sight from the residences, particularly with the fact that you're going to have outside storage. And we all know that outside storage can just be about anything. And that will be in excess of forty-five feet. Other problem I have is township hasn't had a chance to get their arms around it. I would certainly recommend we table this.
Commissioner Johnson?
Because I have a building relationship with the applicant, they will not.
Commissioner Herbert?
I can relate.
Yep. Commissioner Humber?
I guess I was, we'll just explain the township has been involved in this whole process. So I'd be favored to table this.
Commissioner Robbie?
Well, I, Mr. Chairman, I, I can basically reiterate what I said already. Certainly an issue with the township because how much or not enough involvement. It's sort of based with some of the people that came up with the podium and the project. I can, I can certainly a traffic issue. I can see a safety issue. And as I said before, these things have been brought up already, so. I just don't have a real good feel. The zoning's not an issue. It's beyond that. It should, that's the township board needs to look at. Get a better grasp on.
Commissioner Henshaw?
A while back, we had an issue for applicant of Sand Creek Township. And one of the things that we did not know that particular night, what the township and the county plans were for the roads and the bridge down in Sand Creek Township, what their plans were. Had we known that, it would have, maybe, maybe we would have reached a decision that night. So I think kind of the same thing applies here. We should, if we table this, we should find out what the county or township or plans are in the future for this intersection and also the gravel part that is in Dakota, Dakota, find out what, you know, and what future plans are for this area.
So, yes, you'd want to know like in the comp plan.
You know, maybe it won't be done right away, but maybe they have a plan in three years from now. You know what I'm saying?
Yep. Now, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be willing to make a motion that we table the preliminary plat of Fieldstone Industrial Park consisting of ten lots of eighty-three point twenty-nine acres and the final plat of Fieldstone Industrial Park consisting of ten lots of eighty-three point twenty-nine acres until further notice.
Tabling what, to what, to get what information?
Pending the response from, we get from the township and the additional information that I think we need to have with regard to the traffic study for the intersection of Pillsbury and two hundred and forty-fifth. Oh, and then I like to think we should be looking at the berming issue, landscaping issue with regard to the elevation difference between the industrial property or the business park property versus the residences to the north.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Henshaw. Do we have any further discussion on this before we go forward? One thing I, I would like to see from the staff and, on this is that there's a number of uses in business, in rural business reserve that are permitted. And there's conditional uses, there's administrative uses, there's, there's different uses. And I think to understand this and what's the potential here, you have to understand what's a permitted use and what's, you know, what type of businesses are. And it's very specific. And there's about thirty different types of uses in this commercial thing. And, and I just know that there's a chart somewhere that would be very helpful information for people to understand what is actually potential for going in here. And even though something might be a potential use, it's a conditional use. It's very different than, than something that's a permitted use. Does that make sense? So that's what I think. At this time, I will call for a vote on that. And I'll start with Commissioner Huber.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie?
Chairman, could you just repeat that motion, the, the, make sure I understood.
Okay, we're tabling the motion. We're tabling this application to go back to the township for review and recommendation for traffic, safety response, for screening response and the screening plan and the permitting of the berming that's going on. And then just perhaps what I added in there about. Yes.
All right, that's what I.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Abstaining.
Abstaining. Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonkoff? Yes. Commissioner Henshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, we don't have a gavel here. This is our garage. I would usually have a gavel. So this motion has been tabled and is going back to the township board for review and recommendation. And we're going to get more information. It will come back here to a date certain. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming this evening. Really appreciate your input.